Good morning all, welcome Monday morning. The only comment I might have is that congratulations away to go to our county election officer and her people. You've certified that election and it went well and it's to their great efforts and the public has liked to recognize Dory and her staff and good job, well done. All right, consent agenda first. I have no additions to the agenda unless anybody else does. I've got a motion to approve it.
Dr. Clifford, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Dave and I'll second.
All those in favor?
Comment, Mr. Chairman, I did make several corrections with the county clerk with your permission.
Okay.
They were of a minor nature. Thank you.
With the minutes?
Yes.
All those in favor of the consent agenda?
No, this is the agenda.
He moved, he said consent, but we need the agenda first.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
There you go, thank you.
And that's all I seconded.
All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda with corrections. Two minutes.
Here, second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the consent agenda approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Public comment, anybody in the audience that has nothing to do with our agenda, please come for Jennifer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's nice to see all of you again. Carol Anne Crouch and I just wanted to come and kind of give you an update where we are with our extension district. We are up and going and doing very well and we wanted to introduce you to two new hires in our district. And we hired Anthony Riordan, he is our horticulturist, and Renee Tuttle, she is our agricultural natural resource agent. So we're ready to get out there and serve the community now that we're getting full staff. And then in January, we hired a four H agent and she will be starting in January. So we're looking forward to having a full staff and reaching out to the community. So we just wanted to come and give you an update and introduce you to our two new agents.
Excellent. Are you guys stationed here in the Garden City or Scott or?
Yeah, they're in the Garden City office, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Excellent.
And a four H agent, she'll be stationed in the Scott City office, but of course, you know, we're all served in both counties.
You know the highway well.
Yes, yes. Carol Anne is getting to know that highway very well. She is the county, she's the district director, Carol Anne Crouch. You guys all know her.
You posed a question, Mr. Chairman, I had. Where are they stationed?
Awesome. Okay. Comments? Well, thank you. Welcome, welcome aboard. Appreciate it. Anybody else?
Just one comment about your proposed mandate of masking, or is that way at all?
Public comment is now, Leonard, if you'd like to come up and say your piece.
About that?
Yep.
I'm kind of new at this, so I don't really know what was going on here.
Well, we'll make an exception then, sir.
That's fine. I hope you will. Good morning.
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 I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you and give you my opinion and I want you to understand and realize that it is my opinion. It's in regard to the countywide mandating of masking. They're faced with a dilemma and I understand that, but it's my opinion that mandating wearing a mask is not the answer. You're faced with a dilemma on whether you should decide to do this or not. And I'm going to ask each of you to consider in the heart of your hearts the consequences that lie in such a mandate. I'm sure there's many financial considerations that are connected to this mandate. But realize, if you mandate countywide masking, you're bowing to the political pressure that's being put on you and that's why I ask you to consider in your own heart of hearts the correct decision that you should make. If you mandate countywide masking, know that I believe that you are treading on the freedoms and rights that I've been guaranteed by the Constitution. I do not believe that the majority of people in this county are supportive of this mandate. I don't think they want the public wide mandating of masking. But you folks were elected to represent them and that's your job to represent the interests of these people in this community. And I thank you for giving me the opportunity to get up and say my piece.
Thank you, Leonard.
Thank you.
Further comment from the audience? Hearing none, we do have some submitted. Oh, sorry. Could you state your name for the clerk, please?
Dr. De Ebra. I appeared at the city commission meeting and I did present some information there that was being from the commissions as out of date. I have that information here to give to you guys as a twelfth, the day before the city commission meeting. And I didn't tell one more story at that city commission meeting that I'd like to share here. How many of you remember the Diamond Princess?
Remember what, sir?
The Diamond Princess.
The cruise line.
Correct, correct. That's where I want to start with the beginning of this plague. Thirty-seven hundred people floating around on a boat. They wanted to come home to America when they found out they had the plague. Medical advisors, don't come home, you're going to kill us all and you're all going to die basically, float around out there till it's over. And they floated out there for months. Thirty-seven hundred people. There wasn't social distancing, Jesus wasn't with them, nobody could walk on water. And they floated and they floated and then they came home after it ran its course. Seven hundred people caught COVID. Seven died. One was in the eighty-five to ninety-five year old bracket. He was lucky to get on the boat. And I'm not, I mean, I'm not belittling death, but he was lucky to get on the boat. The other six were in the seventy-five to eighty-five year old bracket. That was it. We have done nothing, nothing, nothing with all the draconian shutdown of the country, the maskings. We've done nothing to improve the statistics of the seven people that died and I brought it up on it, they didn't do anything right. They didn't have thirty-seven hundred masks put on people. It ran its course. And who takes cruises? Young bucks? No. That was the military ship that was out there with three thousand men that the government said, don't come home, die for your country. They floated around. They, seven hundred got it. No one died. We got to think of the future, which is based upon youth too. We are ruining our youth. I mean, they're waking up to mask. I can remember the Cuba crisis. I can remember crawling under a desk because we were so afraid we were going to get hit by an atomic bomb. And how ridiculous was that, crawling under a desk? Anyway, I really wasn't prepared to speak. I didn't know what was going to be happening here, but I do want to leave that little bit of information. And entrust, I'm not going to go there, but entrusting your expertise, the ones you get, get your information from. Where are they getting their information from? And I could read some things here that I experienced. I am going to read. I came into chiropractic years ago. I'd never been to a chiropractor when I felt called to God to become one. I'd never been to one. Five months into our education, we're in microbiology, we're stuck discussing immunology and we were talking about diseases. And Professor Matt made the comment that chiropractic did not believe, pure chiropractic did not believe in vaccinations. Well, our daughter had just had her first shot and I was shocked. I went home to my wife and I said, do you know what those idiots are trying to teach me? I too was educated by Big Pharma, like all of us are. That's, that's the prevailing pressure that's, that's cruising around of all of this stuff. Went home, told my wife what I'd learned. She was shocked and she said, what are we going to do? I said, I'm going to keep going to school. And I got convinced that the prevailing authority is wrong on that. My kids never got a shot from then on, my grandkids never had a shot from then on, my daughter-in-law is a nurse. And when she married my son, she it wasn't a topic of discussion for a couple of years. What are we going to do when we have kids? He said, well, if you can convince my dad, we need to, we'll do it. I told him, don't put me in the middle of your marriage. She was educated medically. I said, I was not. I was uneducated and reeducated. In this, in the late seventies when I was going to school, but there was a, there was a lot of hardship from the established medical profession. And I went through the early phases of that. And then a skinny little chiropractor named Chester Wilk sued everybody. I'd like to read what I had hanging in my year, in my office for years. If I can get it to come up here. I'm not the techno wizard. On August twenty-seventh, nineteen eighty-seven, the federal court in Chicago, Illinois found the American Medical Association, the American College of Surgeons and the American College of Radiology guilty of having conspired to destroy the profession of chiropractic in the United States. Evidence revealed at the trial demonstrated that the defendants took advice, took active steps to undermine chiropractic educational institutions, conceal evidence of usefulness of chiropractic care, undercut insurance programs for the patients of chiropractors, subvert government inquiries into the effectiveness of chiropractic while engaging in a massive disinformation campaign to discredit and destabilize the chiropractic profession. This suit represents a meaningful victory only, the chiropractic profession and the patients they serve, but to the growing members of people who will need and seek their services in the future. Things got a lot better for us in our medical doctor relationships and I appreciate the medical doctor that's sitting right here. I, there's a lot of medical doctors here that I really appreciate. You guys, your hearts are right. I, a lot of you, I truly am. And, but there is another side to who educated them also. And I just, I'm just going to leave it with that. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Further discussion from the room? Okay, if not, we do have some online, maybe you'll be into our clerk, she's going to read a couple of them.
The first is from Deanna Clark of Garden City. Commissioners, I saw today that a mask mandate isn't being passed due to emails from your constituents against them. I am a teacher in USD four five seven. I go to school every day knowing that I could contract a virus that could potentially kill me. As I write this, we are waiting on a COVID test to see if my husband has it. What I do to be safe at home and what my husband does to be safe at work mean nothing if everyone else won't do their part. A simple piece of cloth or paper could mean the difference between life and death. And by choosing to ignore that, you are putting the very constituents you claim to care for at deadly risk. Please vote to reinstate the mask mandate from earlier this year. Our lives may very well depend on it. The next is from Carolyn McPhee of Garden City. Finney County Commissioners, I am imploing you to take action to slow this, the out of control spread of COVID-nineteen in our county. Please listen and believe the medical professionals of our community, including those you have hired to run the Finney County Health Department. I will not repeat information they have shared with you except to make my points. Although education on measures that can be taken to stop the spread do and should continue, it is way past time to implement a mask mandate and limit gatherings. The vast majority of people know what needs to be done to slow the spread. Those who are not wearing masks and not social distancing are doing so by choice. This seems to be the elephant in the room, that many people in our county are choosing not to wear masks and not to social distance, thereby causing the out of control spread. It is appalling to hear county commissioners state they do not trust the data the Finney County Health Department provided to them. It was repeatedly stated in the last meeting that the Finney County Health Department Director provided you with data that she herself compiled to be a complete, comparable, accurate, consistent, valid, reliable, weekly representation of the COVID positivity rate in our county. How do I know this data fits these descriptors? I listened when our Finney County Health Department Director explained multiple times how she obtained this very simple data. What is there not to believe? It is unbelievable that the county commission was informed that the positivity rate reached forty-one percent the week of October nineteenth through twenty-third and chose not to take any action. Please slow the spread of the pandemic by implementing a mask mandate and limiting gatherings. Please then put measures in place to enforce these mandates. No one wants these mandates and no one wants to enforce them. Unfortunately, the many people who are choosing not to follow the recommendation or the recommended CDC, KDHE, FCHD guidelines have created this out of control health crisis in our county that must be acted upon. Therefore, I implore you to do the job you were elected to do and implement a mask mandate, gathering limits, and any other proposed directives from Finney County Health Department in regards to COVID-nineteen for the health and well-being of the people of Finney County. The last is from Phalene Powell. If people are sick, they should stay home. If people feel like wearing a mask, they should wear one. Sedgway County has a mask mandate that has done nothing to curb COVID-nineteen. The chart of that county looks like the chart of all counties. Once a mandate is over and free people are free, the cases will rise. Excuse me. As it is with the city mandate, when I get in my car to do shopping, I will turn a different direction and go to a different town to do my shopping. And even if I have to drive a while, that's fine. I choose freedom over dictatorial mandates. That's all.
The commission appreciates and reads all the emails that are given to us and your public comment and enough said. We're going to move on into the agenda items. And the first business item on our list is a Spark Grant Program update from Jeff Stevens. Dory, do we have Jeff on the line? I don't see him on my screen. There, there he is.
Will you see me on your screen now, Commissioner?
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, how are you?
Terrific. What have you got for us today?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
What do you have for us today, Jeff?
So today I have for you a couple recommendations for grant awards and actually some that aren't recommended and I wanted to propose those for your action. In front of you, you should have an updated November sixteenth document that has eight awards recommended for the Household Emergency Relief Grant.
Yes, we do.
Say it again?
Yes, we do. Go ahead.
Okay, great. So the eight recommended awards total twenty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. They are targeting eight households, as you see for, you know, an average somewhere in the high two thousand dollars per grant. As, as a reminder to everybody, these grants are done based on documentation that's provided by the household and the applicant provider. The money is paid directly to the utility provider and/or the rental and mortgage company as well. We also pay going forward on an income adjusted formula that make sure that, you know, folks get what they need as, as things move forward. One of the big things that I wanted to highlight today with these grants too are the fact that it closes today, the Household Emergency Relief Program closes today. So if you know anybody that hasn't gotten their application in by today, please encourage them to get that in so that we can look at it. All the grant awards should be made by mid-December as we follow up on some of the items, some of the outstanding documentation in those pieces. But these, these eight are here for your consideration and approval if you want to discuss these before I move on to the next ones.
Gentlemen? Discussion?
I have a question for Roxanne. Roxanne, how, how many have, do you have in waiting or do you have, are you up to date? One of your advisory service on the household grants.
So when you're saying waiting, there's a, you're talking about not been approved or coming before you?
Yeah.
There's several.
Several.
I would say easily, and Jeff, you could probably back me up, over a hundred. And there's several coming to you that we haven't been able to verify. Some of the information or some of the funding requirements that we needed were not submitted along with it. So there's a lot of follow-up that we're doing, basically that started last week and then well, after today, we'll move into that full force, I'm sure.
There's a hundred and four grant submissions total for this grant application, Commissioner. You know, so Roxanne and her team have been helpful, you know, in getting some of this information that's outstanding. Hey, you're missing a piece of documentation here or there, you know, something like that, that has impacted our ability to, to make the grant award. So we're not going to bring it before you until we can validate all of the other items, all, all the necessary items per the grant requirements.
Further questions? What is your decision on these eight applicants, gentlemen?
Dr. Clifford, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve these eight Household Emergency Relief Grants.
Have a second.
It's moved and seconded. You approve these eight awards for twenty-two thousand, two fifty-nine and twenty cents. Need further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion is carried.
Great. We have three agency operational relief grants here for you today. There are three awards for Trucks Unlimited YMCA Southwest Kansas and Main Street Salon and Day Spa. These are all working capital awards. These are calculated based off their twenty-nineteen tax returns. And these three awards are, you know, total a hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Mr. Chairman, this is Dave speaking and I'll offer the motion to approve for payment the agency operational relief grant recommended, recommended today, the three.
Second.
Discussion on these, no motion. Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the agency operational relief grants? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Opposed? Motion is carried.
Okay, and now the last piece is some response recovery grants. This is a little different this time. We're going to recommend that you approve one and it's in a smaller amount than what was requested. The amount is thirty-five hundred dollars and it's a partial award for High Plains Housing Development Corporation. And the purpose of this is for them to buy PPE for their volunteers that are helping with weatherization efforts. So they've asked for thirty-five hundred in terms of PPE and we are recommending that that continue. However, the rest of their, their requests, we are recommending that you, you not award anything to them for those. And the two requests, the reason that we're recommending there's no award is that there wasn't, they, they didn't, in one grant, they didn't fall within the program guidelines. On the other, the funding, the period of performance wasn't going to align with the December thirtieth end date. They wanted to purchase an equipped building with affordable office solutions. So unfortunately, that, you know, that piece wasn't there. The other four grants that are there, USD four fifty-seven, an indoor air quality assessment. This was a capital piece that unfortunately we couldn't fund underneath the grant application. The Finney County Economic Development Corporation, the business marketing campaign. Unfortunately, that, we tracked that down with the state because it's targeting business. Businesses to come in the county, not necessarily individuals to shop at businesses within the county. They, they recommended that we not approve that and they said they wouldn't reimburse it. The Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Finney County Counties, the, they wanted to fund a one-on-one metric program after school and summer program. And unfortunately, the period of performance was outside that December thirtieth deadline, so we weren't going to be able to support that. And lastly is the First Assembly of God. They wanted to renovate their indoor and outdoor play areas and there was really no connection to the, the program guidelines. So we're, we're not recommending that for funding either.
Jeff, have all those five businesses, do they understand the reason they were not? Have you explained it in detail to them each one of them?
Most of, most of them should, I mean, I, to be honest with you, Commissioner, I'm not a hundred percent sure about Big Sisters, Big Brothers, First Big Brothers, First Assembly of God, and four fifty-seven. But I have personally spoken to both High Plains and Finney County Economic Development. So we did tell them about those solutions. And there's one other from Finney County Economic Development. There's a childcare proposal that we're still waiting to try to track down and see if we can get anything going. And I know Robert and the staff have been also trying to track down another childcare proposal to meet that need. But I will, pending your action, I'll make sure that everybody's been reached out to more than just the official letter. And I'll make sure that, you know, myself or Julianne, the assistant project manager that we have on this, have spoken with each individual so they understand why.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, questions?
Jeff, Dr. Clifford, in our weekly Spark meeting, we've talked about Congress extending the deadline, which I'm very optimistic. Will these ones that fail for period of performance be held pending that deadline or remain active if we get an extension?
We can certainly do that, Commissioner. You know, if that does change and we do see an adjustment of that, we could, there's a couple options that you have. You can choose to not do anything, you know, not take any action on this right now. Or you could choose to resurrect the grant because the period of performance has changed. Just from our perspective, we've cleared this grant. So, you know, we wanted to bring it before you for that discussion piece because I agree with your assessment in terms of being hopeful that we're gonna see an extension. But I think that extension has to come this week for it to have a possibility, you know, definitely before Thanksgiving. After that, it's gonna, I think, would lead some challenges, would lead to some challenges and we probably have to do it. You ride the rails of the same programs but in essence make it a different program. Does that make sense?
Yes, I mean, this morning we need to reject them, I understand, but I don't think Congress works to our schedule, so I was hoping for early December, we'll see. He's right.
Yeah, so I, you know, I think we're trying to find a way to get yes on every single one of these grants. And you know, we're trying to find ways to be creative and make sure that they meet the program guidelines and make sure, you know, the dollars are spent with Finney County organizations to really expand the county's capacity to handle, you know, additional surges and the economic impact that comes from that. So if there's a will, you know, if there's a way, we've got the will.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
This is Dave. Jeff, a quick question for you. What are we gonna run out of first, money or time?
I think time, honestly. I think the staff and the community, I, as I've told you all along, we are going to spend every single dollar within Finney County. We have some contingency items that we have identified that we can spend, you know, that we can spend, of additional requests that organizations have made that are easy, you know, even, you know, county staff. Time, you know, that we haven't reimbursed or even sought to reimburse to try and make sure the money's out there the best that we can. We'll run out of time first, you know, we'll spend every dollar, but time is the big challenge.
Okay. Gentlemen, I'd like to do this in two motions, if you will, one for recommendation and one for the denial of the application, just so we're clear on our records.
So move on the recommendation of thirty-five hundred to High Plains Housing Development Court.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the thirty-five hundred dollar award to High Plains Housing Development Court, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. One more motion, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, based on the recommendation of our consultant, I'll move to deny at this time those other requests.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we ignore the five applications as recommended. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. All right.
That's all I have for you today, pending your questions or any concerns that you all have for us.
One last chance at Jeff, fellas. Anything else?
Does it mean anything to anyone of what is left in each of these pots of money or are you able to provide that this morning, Jeff?
I will provide that in a follow-up email later today when I, I'll add these numbers in and I can send that to Robert, Dory, for transmission to all of you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Jeff. Appreciate all the work you do.
Thank you all very much. Have a great day.
Thanks. You too. Bye. All right. Next item on the agenda is our information technology project update from Doug. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. How are you guys today?
Good.
We do not have a flyover today. We were not able to get synced up with the contractors. They were just outrunning us every time we called them. So they are pretty much done with the north section of conduit board. And this week they will start doing the path that goes to the fairgrounds. The railroad is still a little bit of a holdup, but we have been told by the BNSF contractor that we should hear from BNSF today or tomorrow regarding the completion of the permitting for going under the railroad. Questions on the project, comments, concerns?
I have one, I guess. The conduit's been laid. Are they pulling fiber at the same time or are they gonna come back and do that later?
That's gonna be a separate, a separate item. It's not being pulled at the same time.
Okay. Gentlemen?
And you're still running ahead of schedule with that, is that a true statement?
Yes.
This is Lon for those online. And Doug, I don't know if you heard my comment the last meeting that Ideatech had trouble believing the contractor was sixty-three percent done, so they came out and did a direct inspection. So when they come out and do things like that, are you involved in those conversations as well or just the contractor and Ideatech?
We get an update post-inspection and they did verify, they did some redline work, which is verifying conduit pathing and where it actually is all been laid. They verified the totals that they believe were in the ground and everything is continued on.
Good. Well, I'm just glad you're in the loop. I just wanted to make sure you were not being left out of it.
Right.
Anything else, Doctor?
Doug, since we met on Thursday, what's the update on our additional length, picking up the courthouse, library?
The library and everything. They believe it will be completed on schedule. There's no other holdups. We are going to have to create a proposal for some additional equipment to install that. But yes, we are going that direction also.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it. Keep it up. Trista, I think I saw you. There you are. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I wanted to take before you a suggestion to go ahead and close the treasurer's office this Friday. And that has to do with upgrading our workstation. So that, those upgrades were funded through Spark Dollars. They were able to do a majority of the back desks in the treasurer's office. The problem is the front counter. It's really hard to tear those workstations apart without really disrupting not just that workstation, but the two adjacent ones as well. And so that would cause a significant hardship for us to serve customers. The other thing to consider is that we do have to have the state available to us, so this is really hard to complete after hours. And the reason for that is because we are networked with the state for our scanners and for our printers for the motor vehicle transactions. I would like to add, so in the recommendation that I provided you, it does state that staff members were going to attend state training on that day. Unfortunately, that has been canceled. The state has suspended in-person training for the foreseeable future due to COVID. We learned about that Friday afternoon and that's what I feared would happen. That's why I tried to get everybody in at the same time. But that won't be an option anymore. So do you have any questions? Do you have any concerns that I can answer?
Gentlemen? Yeah, we're talking a bunch today, aren't we?
Yeah.
Well, this is just, it's, you know, it's just one of those things where logistically, it's just easier if we don't have customers in the office. We, you know, we have that to consider as well, how their experience is going to be, not just are we going to be able to serve them, but what's it gonna look like if, you know, we have workstations all torn apart and, you know, we're having to shuffle people here and there.
Now, who's gonna do this for you? Or is this in-house?
So, yeah, so it'll be IT and maintenance will be helping us reconfigure some of the standing desks that we have. We have to do some changes to those to accommodate some of the additional equipment we'll be getting through this funding.
Mr. Chairman, what year?
Go ahead.
This is Lon. Two things. One, this appears to be a better time than if it were a week later as far as the most traffic in your office. Am I correct in that?
That is very correct. Also, you know, the county isn't open next Friday and I don't know the availability of the state since it's that day after the holiday as well.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, I'm off a week, I guess.
Sure.
And then secondly, how are you getting the word out that you will be closed that day?
So we do have messaging ready to go pending your decision. We will do all electronic means that we can. We've also contacted some radio stations about a press release as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Gentlemen?
Need a motion?
We need a motion.
I move that we allow the county treasurer to close their offices on Friday for updates.
Second. Oh, go ahead and give it to Bill.
Further discussion? Somebody's bound to not get your notice and bang on the door and wonder, but...
Well, that usually happens.
That's gonna happen regardless.
Yeah, we'll be there to explain it, you know, because my staff will still be there working, you know, as these updates take place as well. It won't be a free day for everybody to go home.
Fair enough. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. You may lock it down.
Thank you.
Dory, you're next for final election twenty-twenty update.
Yeah, so today what I wanted to review is the township offices. And if we start on the first page, we've got the township treasurer and trustee for the township of Garden City.
Which one of these gentlemen are the commissioners for that district?
For Plano?
That would be Dr. Clifford, girl.
Dr. Clifford, I lean out of the...
Lucky you.
I'd like to nominate Mr. fictitious, actually. Richard, no, Lindsey Ruiz.
Lindsey Ruiz.
You ought to try to complicate it, Watson.
Okay, so that will take care of Island Ho Township.
Again, Dory, for clarification, if Lindsey says I prefer not, then you have to bring it back to us.
Then that will come back to you for an appointment.
I just want to make sure we're very clear on that.
We'll get a letter out to her today. We'll get a letter out to all of these candidates today. If any of them decline, it would be up to you to appoint. And we will do that at our next meeting, which I believe is December second-ish?
Yeah, something like that. Okay, thank you.
The next township is Pierceville and we did have two people on the ballot there, so nothing to decide there. Same with Pleasant Valley. I just wanted you to see who the new treasurer and trustees are in the townships. On the next one, township treasurer of Holcombe or Sherlock Township. Matt Jones received nomination for the treasurer. If you go to the back page, he also received election for trustee. So what I will be doing is visiting with him and he will have to basically resign one of those positions. And then it will be left to you to appoint. And again, you could use this list of write-ins with someone to appoint.
Jeez, a lot of writing.
Holcombe's a big precinct, so when there's an empty spot, there's all kinds of stuff that can turn up.
I got two. I don't think I want the job.
Yeah, you were on there. I think your wife was on there too.
No, she didn't want it either.
She only got one vote. So that is Sherlock. And now for township treasurer of Terry Township, also known as Friend. For the treasurer, we have Zeke Wampler and Candace Waltz in a tie. I don't know who would like to draw from that one.
That's a...
Is that you?
Mr. Jones?
No, it's you, though.
Zeke Wampler.
Zeke Wampler, okay. Thank you. All right. And then the last one is township trustee for Terry Township, also known as Friend. So we had like a five-way tie on this one as well. We have Roxanne Morgan, Casey Robinson, Sarah Brown, Steve Crable.
Crable.
Crable? Sorry? And Barb Parks. Yours is your name?
Oh, Terry Township, we have a...
We have a hard time at Terry Township.
Well, Roxanne, congratulations.
It was all due to your speech, your campaign speech.
The one person that was looking.
Okay, so that is all the update I have for you today. We haven't had time yet to do the metrics that I usually present to you, but just given the timing of last week. But I will have those for you definitely at next meeting and then you'll likely be making some appointments at the next meeting as well.
Okay.
Any other questions about election?
Great job.
Thank you.
Good job.
John, you're hiding behind the podium for me, but I think you're there. Yeah, good morning.
Great time, right?
It should be.
A lot of time.
Hey, we're...
You know, I don't know how we're gonna deal with this next meeting. I really don't.
We create short timers with your staff.
Yeah. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Sir, you have the flight thing. My... Yeah, we'll need to play Holcombe, but we'll have to play that one first. The guys did a flight for Jenny Barker for us, started from the north side to the south. And you see, they worked on pavement last week or someone who was still nice or the week before, starting the sidewalks on both sides. The plan is to have... The plan is to have all the concrete work on this north end done by Friday, or for sure before Thanksgiving. Um, and then to wait till probably, I'm assuming after Christmas to finish up our comeback. The dirt contractor is working on, uh, they removed all the pavement, um, removing the material to grade on the south end, and is beginning to put the, the base material down, like packed it in, and then put some temporary surfacing on portions of it to keep traffic flow, um, on the side streets.
When did they fly this, John? I told us.
This was Thursday, I believe.
Just occurs to me, all the utilities to go underground now? There's no overhead?
All the utilities are all underground, um, for sure on the east side. Wheatland still has holes on here on the, on the west side. Um, there was all city stuff on the east, on the west was city, east now is, is Wheatland's. Yeah, so, and then there's another video of, of the pipe work, um, running down Porter House and T Bone. The, the pit should all be seeded and mulched. And then, uh, yeah, there's, yeah, they're still working on that, but you see, they've been through Porter House here with, uh, the storm sewer. They've got inlets on each side, ready to go, um, after the road is all graded up again. They've, this, let's see, they are in the pit now. They're digging out the equipment. They have concrete pipe into the pit, um, working their way out. Once they get that and this T bone section tied in, they're headed down Tenderloin, um, to Jenny Barker and finish the south part of Jenny Barker on, after that.
Do you have a video of the reshaped pit?
Um.
It's pretty cool-looking pit now.
I'm not sure this might get us too hard of that.
There it is, there it is.
Yeah, you see the pit now. He's turning around to go head south, but.
I'm impressed with that drone. What kind of range does that have? How far can that be away from the operator before they lose vision?
You have to ask the pilot.
They're, they're flying that thing a mile away.
Um, they can be, I think they'll. So there's your pit, and everything's seated, is back there seated. I think yet they, they will seat the bottom, but I think they're waiting for some of this other work to be done. Um, you can see the ends of the, the concrete pipe going into the pit. There'll be rubble or riprap, bigger rock at the bottom to help disperse water, keep from eroding away.
It's quite a transformation of a pit.
Looks like so. Anyway, that's for sure.
Lon?
Uh, this is Lon for those online. Just a quick question, John, uh, when we were seeing that first video, the thought occurred to me, are we, uh, having any concerns expressed by the homeowners? Are they, uh, I mean, I realize there's been, you know, a lot of inconvenience, but have we had somebody say, well, I can't get to my home tonight, or anything like that?
Um, I've probably issued more concerns to them than the inspector than homeowners have to me.
Oh, okay.
Um, it, it is difficult to get in and around. Um, I think the plans were all great to get going and get started on other stuff, but we didn't, we did, I think contractor did a fairly poor job of making it convenient or as best they can. Um, they are getting in and out, and they are doing it. It's, it's not the best, but.
But you feel like the homeowners have been pretty understandable about that?
They've been really understandable, because I think as any other neighborhood, we'd hear a bunch of complaints about.
Yeah, thank you for that.
I'll address that. I did have one homeowner contact me about, uh, what they were doing, and simply, John answered their question and simply.
And they're not even living out there.
They don't even live out there, okay.
They're not even living, they have a lot, but they don't even have a home.
They were worried about, worried about losing property, or simply were the.
Yeah, and it was understandable. They had flags all over and you've, yeah, you could have seen it in there, their corner lot. They have the, the big pipe on the air growl signs on their properties, but they're in, it's in the rideaway lot on their property. Um, Farland Road, still buying rideaway, and it's still moving along pretty well. I think there's a handful of properties left to, to finalize. I think they're, they've made, they negotiated or finished negotiating with all of them, but still have a few more to, um, to close on yet. Last week, or last time, if you saw in your packet, I put next year's projects, overlay, ceiling projects in. Um, on December second, they will bid out the overlay project, which is a six-mile road from Big Low to Jenny Barker, um, mill and overlay. They will.
No, say that again.
Six-mile road.
Six-mile, okay.
Big Low.
Okay.
All the way over to Jenny Barker.
That's the one that got tore up pretty good with the, by bad construction.
Jenny, yeah, for the highways to Jenny Barker got tore up really pretty bad, or at least through Third Street, um. That mill up, they'll mill that up and no, and put an overlay on, or two inches overlay. Um, ceiling, just a forty-something miles of road. I, there is a map in your packet. And then they'll buy rock to bid out the rock for the ceiling project on the same day. So there's three bid openings on Wednesday, the second, that Roger should bring to you that next Monday.
I know, or is there rocks available?
You still have some in your property. I told him to use it or come get it before you used it, awesome. Like, it's, um, I don't know what other updates you need from me.
Well, I've got, do have a question. Uh, do you have any groundwork laid out for Clymel Road issue we talked about for your successor? Uh, you know, where we had that three miles, four miles of road we were gonna improve base-wise? Am I off-base here?
You, you've got me.
Clymel or parallel.
Par- parallel, I've said Clymel, parallel.
Um, I did, do we, we were waiting, if, well, it needs a consultant, and I hadn't started anything to hire a consultant, just.
I just wanted to get any.
Because I wasn't gonna be here to finish it up or.
Any notes or something like that you could put in place for your successor on that?
Uh, I didn't know what that was gonna look like either, so.
Questions for John?
I can, I can start something this week, you, I mean, but you just tell me. It was, I was coming to you with Third Street, parallel road, something else, and wasn't sure which order either to put it in.
Fair enough. All right, well, John, we have a little gizmo to present to you here. I'll read it quickly for the audience. Finney County, Kansas, thank you for your years of dedication to Finney County, W B County. Finney County Public Works, John Irvin, February five, nineteen ninety-six, two hundred and twenty. You can hang that in your, over your mantle, or wherever you wanna put it, but.
Awesome, thank you.
I thank you for your friendship and everything you've done for Finney County here. Best of wishes, best of luck.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I enjoyed every bit of it, for most of it. With all of your help, all of your guidance, um, and I guess, making me who I am, I guess, too, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
For, for you, John, here's a little box that I came in with. I might point out, I believe it's Thursday, two o'clock, we do have a public reception for John, or?
Two to four.
Two to four o'clock, cool. Say attaboy one more time.
Nice, here in this room.
Here in this room, okay. Thank you. Uh, Colleen, your turn. Healthy party.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. Morning.
All right, got some, uh, numbers here for you all. Um, October twenty-fifth through October thirty-first, the whole week. We had a total of two hundred and thirty-four positives. That was down fifty-five from the previous week. However, our positivity rate increased two percent to forty-three percent from the previous week. From November first to November seventh, we had a total of three hundred and forty-two cases, which is an increase of a hundred and eight cases from the previous week. Our positive, positivity rate increased to forty-five percent, which is an increase in two percent from the previous week. Hospitalizations, I don't have the current update from this weekend on the hospital yet, but last week they have averaged around fourteen admissions. Um, we have some other updates to just give you. We have four out of our six COVID response team members that have been hired. They have been a huge blessing, um, to help us start catching up with the amount of caseload. Having three hundred and forty-two cases that week, uh, it's taking a tremendous effort to catch up. It's also been able to give, um, a little bit of relief to our communications person so that she's not just data entry with, um, positive cases. She's been able to start working on that dashboard that we showed you a couple of months ago, the G I S dashboard. Uh, we should be launching that here in the next couple of days, um, and also putting out some information online about how to access that dashboard, how to use it, how to use those features. Um, so we're pretty excited for that. Uh, working with several county departments and our administrator to work on some sort of modifications for our drive-up, um, process over on the south side of the building, so that it creates cover and wind barrier, um, protection for those that are testing, um, through the winter. Uh, we also have, of course, a reminder of our virtual town hall meeting this evening from five to seven-thirty that is representative of several organizations in our community to talk about the current state of COVID in our community. That is about all that I have for you. Um, other than, uh, we have also launched our, quite a bit of campaigning and proactive behaviors, educational tools, um, to begin getting more information out about, um, protection me- measures for COVID-nineteen in our community. We have the challenge that we launched that went from November sixth through the sixteenth on, um, the three Ws, so wash your hands. Um, wash your hands, watch your distance, and wear your mask. Uh, so we have several initiatives that we're working on that to get out into the community to provide more education and support.
Can you switch? Uh, this is Dave with a couple of questions for you, Colleen, the, the dashboard you're talking about, is that the concept that we talked about months ago where it identified where the positives were in the, in the county and?
No, uh, so it's the dashboard that, um, Trey was here, and he was kinda showing you. It has like a block screen, and then it has different graphs. Um, we had only had partial data in it at that time. So with the amount of rapid increases, that's more data to put in into that dashboard, so Maggie's been working on that pretty, uh, pretty hard to get that launched. Um, but it'll provide, it'll take the place of the, um, box that we have on our finneycounty.org site. Um, and we'll just kinda provide some different graphs that also kind of allow overlapping of, of graphs as well. So it, it's a, um, it, it's a very, um, intelligent, um, dashboard for us to, to use.
At one time, though, we did talk about maybe there's a potential to identify the neighborhoods that.
General areas, sure. Um, Trey did talk to me about that last week, and so we'll, we'll pull the data to start looking at addresses. Um, I don't necessarily know if at this time that's something that we would release, but it'd be interesting information to have.
We, uh, I'm sure I speak for other commissioners, all have received a number of contacts, emails, phone calls and whatnot regarding the ongoing COVID. And in my case, with an accusation of not trusting statistics, which I find, uh, a, a, a little interesting. We didn't distrust it. We're asking, what, what are we comparing this county as opposed to other counties? But, but I don't get personally as, as upset over the positivity rate as when I see you have a hundred and sixteen positives one day. That, that gets somebody's attention. And, and those, those numbers of positives, was to put my feeling in perspective, I'm gonna give you a hypothetical. Get out here a ways, and one day you only have three people come in for a test, and two of them are positive. That day you had a sixty-six percent positivity rate, did you not? But isn't it great? We only had two positives. And that's, that's a perspective I come from, is get those numbers down. Uh, positivity rate is not nearly as material, so, but I thank you for what all you guys are doing, and, and I'm not in doubt of your, of your figures at all. They're scary.
Sure, a- and we're definitely testing more than, you know, we have a pretty good sample size that we're testing when you're looking at overall from Kearney County, Genesis, and the Health Department, the hospital, several organizations. When we're looking at our total numbers tested, sure, that would be something to evaluate if we got down to only testing twenty or thirty individuals, you know, a week. Um, but we have pretty high numbers of what we're testing at the moment, so.
I understand, yeah, that's, that's a scary word.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, uh, this is Lon for those online. Before you, before you put me on the clock, Mr. Chairman, uh, just know I have three questions that I'm gonna ask.
Just put yourself on the clock, sir.
Uh, first of all, the, when we say active monitoring, help us in the, in the public understand what that means.
So actively monitoring is anyone who is a confirmed positive or who is testing and is not out of quarantine yet. So anyone that is still on quarantine that's a confirmed positive, or anyone that we are suspecting is a positive case that is being tested.
In quarantine, is it always fourteen days? Because I had a report this past week that somebody said, well, it's ten days, and then it's fourteen days, and I'm not sure what my quarantine is, because they were in quarantine.
Sure. So if you are a positive, a confirmed positive, it's ten days from your onset of symptoms? However, if at day seven or eight, they still have symptoms, they could be infectious to others, then we lengthen it to the fourteen days because of that. If it's going past that fourteen days, we recommend that they follow up with their primary care physician to then have further oversight of their medical condition. Close contacts, close contacts, household contacts. Okay, so two different things. Close contacts, fourteen days from last contact to the positive. Household contacts are fourteen days from last contact to the positive, if the positive isolates from the rest of the family. If they do not isolate from the rest of the family, then it's fourteen days from the positive resolve of symptom date. Because they have up to fourteen days following that last contact with a positive to then develop symptoms and become infectious to others.
And, Mr. Chairman, this is still part of my first question, so, uh, the, uh, the, uh, other thing that they were, uh, saying, uh, is that they were getting mixed reactions about the quarantine. But the other one was, uh, this is a person who came to me, uh, said that I wanted to go to my primary physician because I felt like I was symptomatic, but they referred me to the emergency room rather than having me come to the primary physician. So has that been the case most of the time, if they're symptomatic and they haven't been tested, that, uh, that they go to the emergency room?
Uh, so I'm not, uh, aware of that specifically, or do I have like a direct, a, a direct, um, counting of that? Um, my concern there is, without knowing the situation, were their conditions or the symptoms enough to say they need to go to the emergency room? So were they having difficulty breathing? Were their, um, oxygen levels low? Uh, those types of things, sure, emergency room would seem appropriate.
And then my other two questions, uh, one is the new hires that you referenced, uh, what, what's their role? Uh, just help me understand that a little bit more, and maybe the public to understand too.
Uh, so it's all things COVID at this point. So we have them helping with answer phones up at the front. Um, testing site helping, um, support that, so. Um, testing site helping um support that, so um anywhere from doing the actual tests if they have license to do the actual tests, um, helping support the check-in and check-out and paperwork process within our testing. They're doing data entry, um investigations, contact tracing, all responsibilities of COVID, um mainly because we need them all trained to so they can play the play wherever we need that filled that day.
And then my last question is related to the testing and and it's my understanding from your previous presentations, we only test if they're showing some signs or something. But evidently other counties are doing it differently because I had people come to me last week said I couldn't get tested, and they're Finney County residents. Couldn't get tested in Finney County, so I went to Seward County and they tested me.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so i- is that true, that if there's no consistency in the hundred and five counties uh that uh as far as what triggers a test?
Sure, so you could say, yes, there's no consistency, but a lot of that will also depend on if they're sending the labs directly to KDHE's lab or if they have a private lab that's offering those tests. Um, we follow the KDHE um guidelines, um since we're using their testing supplies in their lab to process this test. So yes, there's a wide variety of testing initiatives across the state and it varies by county.
So my my last point, and and this is nothing to you personally, as 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 I've said to you before, I'm never gonna be personal when I ask you these questions. This is regarding data and so forth.
Sure.
It appears to me though that if there's not that consistency, it skews the data uh from a statewide basis. Am I correct in that assumption?
Um, I would not say it skews the data, but you need to individually evaluate each county on the way that they are operating and testing. Um, so in our county, we have let kept that as a pretty consistent basis so that we could track our progress and our community's response over the last several months.
Well, the reason I asked the question, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to belabor this, but the reason I ask the question is we're currently being compared to other counties. We're being compared to non-masked and masked counties and so forth and so on. But it's hard for me as a commissioner to look at that data and say it's apples to apples. Because if one county like Seward is testing, they're not, they're asymptomatic, symptomatic, but we're testing symptomatic, that doesn't appear to me as a layperson to be apples-to-apples uh data. Uh, am I incorrect in that assumption?
Uh, so it's not apples-to-apples, but that almost justifies that Finney County is in a much worse place than what all those other counties are at. Because they are testing asymptomatic and their amount of positives are so much lower than what our number of positives per our population is here. I don't know if you had a chance to listen to the statistics and the data that Shannon Dick was talking about at the City Commission?
Yes, I did.
But he was comparing our population numbers, so how many people per thousand that we have um positive versus other counties. And and our our positives are through the roof. Our percentage here is is through the roof. It's it's a very different circumstance in Finney County compared to Johnson, compared to Wyandotte, compared to a lot of those larger counties. And even so, looking at our whole southwest Kansas portion, Seward and Liberal are extremely high as well, extremely high.
But they're obviously testing differently.
Sure.
So, but anyhow, thank you for your uh contributions, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Just so you know.
Oh, wow, I, no, that's not my record yet, though.
That's not your record. Uh, just to follow up, uh, you know, Lon asked some questions about what quarantine means. Is you have that on the website for those who want to look up and see how many days that's that's posted, is it not?
Um, I'll I'll have to review that and look at it and then, you know.
It might be a good idea somewhere to clarify that for the public on uh your site or somewhere else that uh if you've been exposed, this is your days and and we highly encourage everybody to follow the recommendations that we put forth. Questions over here.
Colleen, question and comment.
Sure.
Uh, if you're asymptomatic and you test positive, uh, you still quarantine for fourteen days or ten days?
So asymptomatic should be ten days from their testing date. Um, a lot of what we have found is those that are asymptomatic, they have had some sort of other symptoms, whether that was symptoms within the last month, whether that was symptoms currently that they didn't really re-realize were COVID-nineteen. We're finding some symptoms at some point, so we use that to help influence and consider their quarantine dates.
And then the comment was on the, was the advent of the two different companies bringing out their vaccines or requesting um emergency use. Uh, we discussed with Jeff the other day about the ability to store the Pfizer one, which is at a minus eighty or ninety degrees centigrade. And um they were looking into that, so I don't know where they are on that, but.
Yeah, um, there might be a increased demand for some liquid nitrogen at some point, so it's just there's a variety of vaccines that are going to be potentially on the market and several that are being tested um overseas as well. But we'll see, we'll see what happens.
Well, I know Moderna's that they announced this morning, I was watching on the news channels, it said that if you break into refrigeration, thirty, good for thirty days, and if you freeze it, it's good for six months, so. I think there's gonna be a lot of options available.
Yep, we do have um a newer uh vaccine fridge and then we also did purchase last year a um vaccine freezer, um for these types of things, so. We have some availability for that.
But but do you have the uh deep freeze storage already or do we need to go out and buy that for you?
Um, it's all just gonna depend on what's available and uh what that direction is from KDHE. Um, I I'm trying to recall the lowest temperature that our freezer goes to, but it is um it is a medical grade um fallout. Um, we just had to do all of the um application through CDC for vaccine um distribution, so we did enter in all that data of our refrigerator, so we'll be awaiting direction from KDHE if that will be acceptable or not.
Okay. And uh, I don't know, uh, for me, there's a gorilla's room about the city's actions last week, or is that going to come up, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Not unless somebody brings it up.
Okay, well, I would like to bring it up. Um, and unfortunately I wasn't able to follow the entire proceedings. Uh, and the city's minutes, of course, are not official, so I only have the uh the agenda uh resolution. Do you have the information uh fully for us, or is what what the city is putting into force?
Uh, the full ordinance?
At today, yes.
Um, I I did not bring it, no.
Does anyone have it? Robert, do you have that for us, or?
No, we we.
It was published on a paper.
It was in the paper, but which I don't get up to right now, I'm off, I'm only on digital and I I didn't see it on digital.
It was published.
I don't know if I brought it, but the only thing that was different from what they considered at their agenda was an item L under exemptions for religious uh groups. Otherwise, it was approved as what was published for their agenda.
And and it's effective this morning, according to.
Effective today, through the sixteenth of December.
I have it at my next meeting.
Yeah, I have that here as well and I've read it, but that that's the final version. Does that have a R graph L?
There's a letter L added to the exemptions for re-for religious groups.
Okay, otherwise it went as uh, okay.
Correct.
So uh, I'd like to talk about what the implications that has for the county. Uh, I know Robert and I spoke on Thursday that we have buildings within the city limits. Um, Robert, any any change in our operation based on this?
Not uh, not at this point. Um, I have uh reached out to both Roger and Angie at the fairgrounds to make a determination on how this might affect some of the upcoming events in the next month. They are looking at that, they'll be back to me uh yet this week, this week.
So from the uh capacity limit sample?
Correct, correct. Obviously, the um the ordinance would be uh in effect there as well, obviously, since others within the city limits, but uh as well as all the other county facilities that lie within the city limits. But uh we're looking specifically at the fairgrounds and the gathering places to make that determination on what impacts that might have to the to their renting out of a facility.
As far as public county buildings, are you have already put a mask mandate in for public buildings
Yes, yes.
before the city passed their deal anyway?
They all have a prior, even prior to the ordinance, uh, have have uh face cover required.
Mr. Chairman.
Good.
Long, I'm sorry, Bill, I didn't.
Yeah, just, I wanted to continue that conversation. So in Ellis County, uh, I mean, they put in capacity limits and it eliminated like a couple of wedding receptions, so I think our our citizens have a right to know, uh, so I hope they're taking a hard look at what's on the schedule.
Correct, yes.
And if it will have impact. And then uh, I I assume that we are not discussing extending city action to the county. Uh, but I I would like to congratulate the city since they have the majority of the population in Finney County and the majority of the buildings uh for taking this uh proactive step. But I mean, we're we're out of control on positivity rates any way you measure. Uh, and and it's uh, I think it's created a measure of fear, frankly. Uh, we have patients who won't come to Finney County and I'm sure businesses have patrons who won't come because of this, uh, so I I congratulate the city on being proactive uh because we need to uh show folks that uh we're serious about mitigating this this virus. All I have to say.
Mr. Chairman, along Bill's uh thoughts on, I think on reading his mind about the size of gatherings. Uh, Robert, I would have a favor to ask and see if the commissioners support me that at our next meeting, Angie provide to us a list of the of the events that she has a contract on, so we might have some kind of an idea of what kind of groups we have, whether it's five hundred, five thousand, or five.
Sure.
If you could do that, it would be helpful.
In fact, I'll probably send that out, I I could send that out earlier if need be, just to give you an update.
We may, we. We may wanna consider addressing the the size of gatherings at the fairgrounds.
Got it.
So.
Further discussion on this topic. Colleen, well done. Thank you for everything you're doing. Keep doing it, and your staff, it's an incredible burden, we realize that. And we're very supportive and thankful for you guys who are looking out for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we had a timeout request, and so before we continue with the county administrator reports and commissioner reports, we will take a f-five minute, ten minute.
Ten minute.
Ten minute break, and then we'll reconvene at exactly ten o'clock.